All right, I will call this meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda, Item B, Schematic Design Presentation for Roland Gray's Middle School renovation, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I'm going to turn this over to LeAnn Lawrence, who will introduce the project and our presenters tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. We are pleased to present the schematic design presentation for Roland Gray's Middle School. It is also one of four middle school renovations included in the 2014 bond program. Similar to Myrtle Grove, the scope will include major renovations to building infrastructure and building systems, but won't include additions or significant reconfiguration of a classroom space. And again, just like our other projects, any of our projects, our goal is to enhance this facility's role in serving as an appropriate learning environment for our students. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Ernie Olds. He's the architect, works with Becker Morgan Group, and he will be making the presentation. Mr. Olds.
Thank you, LeAnn. Good evening, members. It's been our pleasure working with the team, and we're going to take you on a quick tour on what we're doing. You'll find that our project parallels... Am I doing this right? There we go. That which you saw for the previous project, that's our project team up there. Nice group of people, WM Jordan, Rusty Balderson is here representing them, working together with Charlie and his team at the school. It's been a great, a great environment so far. Just to orient you a little bit, so those who may not be as familiar with it, it's a four-building campus. Building A there is the academic two-story wing. Eighty percent of the, of the learning goes on in, in that building. Building D is the admin building that parents and students see when they first come to the school. And Building B is composed of the auditorium, cafeteria, gym, and electives. Building C behind you, you will see is the band room and then the basketball court just behind that, and that plays into our scenario here pretty quickly. As you did with the previous school, the facilities helped us perform a thorough survey, and we identified these five critical needs for the campus, the classrooms, space needs, HVAC, technology, toilets, and certain other items. And you'll see, we'll get into it, we'll give a little more detail here. We've come up with six items that we felt were really the most significant things that needed the most attention. Now, that Building A, that two-story wing, needs significant renovation. Its thermal envelope is quite dated. It comes from 1959, 1960. It's really in remarkably good shape for its age, but, but clearly does show its age. It's going to need a brand-new fire sprinkler system throughout the entire campus. We're going to need to bring new power over to Building A. You'll see in the photographs, it's got window air conditioning units, so it's pretty limited in its ability to keep the humidity and the temperature controlled. But in order to do the renovations in Building A, we're going to have to institute a, a series of portable classrooms, which we'll show you in the, in the basketball field here in a minute. Additionally, we're going to go ahead and renovate the toilet rooms, bring them up to ADA compliance in both A, B, and C. Certain additional mechanical upgrades to Building B, particularly in the auditorium, and then limited renovations, both in the band and the admin buildings. The required items then, we believe, are going to fit the budget nicely and should give us some additional money to spend on those optional three items, which include the cafeteria and auditorium renovations, gym renovations, which primarily include lighting and bleachers, and then site modifications that are there for student and pedestrian safety. So just a couple of pictures to let you know what the school looks like. There's your window air conditioning system. So at one point, it didn't have any air conditioning. You can see this is the dated nature of the, of the ceiling tiles and the conduits have been spread throughout the ceilings. The learning environments, the lighting is, is a little bit harsh. The cafeteria area is enclosed right now with some glass and, and framed walls that we're, we're planning to remove if possible to expand the usefulness of the cafeteria. And you can see certainly the, the toilets have had better days and really need a complete upgrade. And certain life safety systems, of course, we, in our code analysis, determined that the fire sprinkler system is really the best way to go for safety. And of course, then the site also is a, a challenging site from a traffic standpoint, both pickup and drop-off, and we believe we can improve that somewhat. We really took a close look at everything here. We literally crawled inside and underneath the building in many ways. So this is just some shots of, of what is going on in there. Steel is in great condition, not a lot of rust. The building really is in very good shape considering its age. With WM Jordan's help, we went so far as to cut a hole in the side of the building and really look in detail of how this building is put together and what we're going to need to do to improve that, that exterior wall. So that was most helpful in our budgeting and our planning process. This is our 3D Revit model that shows the campus again, and we'll take you through each of the wings in the sequence in which we plan to do the renovations. First, the academic wing, first and second floor, Building A, in the light red coloration are the areas of significant work. So the, the curtain wall, that's the glass and aluminum wall on both sides, both floors, is replaced in its entirety. We will be replacing the roof on this building, the toilets for, for both the boys and the girls, and some work and staff improvements are taking place, along with finishes, mechanical improvements, of course, lighting. In terms of the technology question Mr. Shell asked, for example, last time, it already has the, the upgraded wiring, and it's really a matter of the endpoints that, that need some, some slight improvement. And we, we're able to add about 400 square feet to the media center. There's a slight indentation in the existing building that we're going to be able to fill in with this new curtain wall, so the media specialist is thrilled, will be able to gain a little bit of, a little bit of room for their activities. Again, because everybody, for the most part, is in Building A all the time, this slide is to show the four additional portable units. We're talking about 32 separate classrooms in four eight-module components that would be located on the basketball court essentially, behind the, the band building, Item C. And this will allow then the contractor to move in on the first summer, once the portables are, are in place, and really get to the business of, of doing the, the tough work in Building A. And it will take them for the, the, most of the academic year to complete the renovation to Building A before we move into the other parts. Building B then, as you can see, the red is the mandatory renovations, toilet, building envelope issues, and, and light blue are the optional renovations. The priority would be the center, blue square, which is the cafeteria walls, try to expand the usefulness of that space and improve some of the functionality in the kitchen. And the partitioning that's in the back is a little bit of a, of a, of a rabbit worm back there that we need to kind of clean up. Second to that then would be improvements to the auditorium that would include things such as the seats. Obviously, the ceilings come down and get replaced because of the sprinkler systems and, and interior finishes and lighting go along with that. And if budget allows, then we will continue to work by improving the gym and, and other things. In Buildings C and D, again, these are all in the mandatory category, the required categories, ADA improvements to the restrooms, the band area, finishes, new windows, things of that nature. And Building D, some, fairly significant repartitioning of space to accommodate the, the proper offices that are necessary and sort of the, the way the school is being operated this time, along with the HVAC and windows and so forth. Then our blue are options, again, site work here. You can see the, the parking traffic pattern piece on the upper left and top of the page that we'd like to repave, new parking stops, kind of rework a little bit of some of the traffic flow that we think would help improve safety, and if we're lucky enough, we can do that. There are improvements to the portable classrooms that are existing on the site that are contemplated, perhaps, perhaps one of the, the four portable classrooms that's brought in becomes a permanent. These are just sort of part of the early discussions. And then renovations to the walkways that are in really pretty bad shape would also be part of this consideration here. We've, as I said, working with WM Jordan, they've come up with a pretty solid construction logistics or sequencing plan, and as I said, in Phase One, portable classrooms get installed first, then they begin to do the demolition of Building A, the two-story academic wing, and really attack that in, you know, with a lot of effort then between the fall and spring of 2018. Get that ready, move the kids back into Building A for the, the next fall, and then be, then come back into the B building where the portables then will serve as elective spaces for those that are displaced from that. And it, you know, the plan, of course, is to be finished August 2019. At this point, don't have any doubt that we can achieve that and believe that, here's the cost breakdown, that at this point, those, the items you saw in the light red are all within the budget. If anything, I think we'll have more available money for optional items as we get into it. And our next step is really to perfect the, the issues, work more closely with Eddie, LeAnn, and, and our contractors to really come up with that, that exact list and really try to maximize our, our budget. Schedule, again, we're, we're heavy into it right now. We'll be, we'll be done by, by March timeframe. There's a lot of preliminary work that's going to be happening with the temporary classrooms, a lot of potential different sequences that can occur because you have a construction manager that the regular bidding wouldn't allow. So this allows the contractor really get a jump on pricing, on scheduling, and being ready to go, so when June hits, things are, are really moving quickly. And like I said, will be done in August of 2019. And that is my presentation.
Questions?
Did you, did you say that the, you'll be redoing the roof? I couldn't recall what you said.
The roof of Building A is getting completely redone, as well as the canopy roofing. The roofing on Buildings B, C, and D is reasonably in good shape and only gets patched where necessary to accommodate penetrations or, or mechanical equipment.
Capacity is about, it will be the same.
Capacity is exactly the same. I guess the media center gets slightly bigger. That's the one, the one increase that, that we would have.
Is there not a motion on the floor? Is there, Mr. Chairman?
No, ma'am.
I move that we accept the schematic.
I have a question, sir.
Well, I need a second. Second. All right, now.
Going back to the page, it's looking down on the site, it says construction sequence. The, the area in red, that's a fairly heavy forested area, is that going to be cleared or is that going to be remain forested?
No, no, ma'am. It's just, the under-story would be available for contractor equipment or, or material laydown or things. They would fence off an area, if I'm correct, to, you know, make as most use of that site as they possibly can. And the other area is, is right to the south end of B building. There's another zone there. So they'll, they'll be working out where the construction trailers sit and, and so forth, but the idea is not to deforest that area in any way.
All right, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a motion and a second. Any other questions? All those in favor of accepting this schematic design signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is accepted. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Yes, sir. All right. Next item, Item C, North Carolina Voting Delegate, Appendix N, it says me. Oh, this is for the...
State.
State.
Who's going? State conference.
Yes. Anybody going?
It's November.
It's, uh, yes.
So it's November.
It's like November, well, yeah, but they've had, they've been moving it around a little bit. It is November...
But I'm thinking about going. I haven't really, I've got a couple of things I'm working on, but I'm, I'm leaning towards going this year.
I think if, if a board member is going, I think they ought to be able to be a voting delegate.
I agree. I agree.
I move to that effect.
I think, but I've got to send in a name by October the 20th. I can't go. I'll be out of the country.
I can't go.
If I go, I might have a lot of votes. I think we're entitled to about five, I believe.
Four or five.
Four.
I don't know if they'll let you vote more than once.
No, you don't get to vote. Wouldn't I?
Well, let's leave it this way. You think you're going?
Think so.
Well, then I'll appoint you, and if you don't go, you don't go. Is anybody else thinking about going? Is this it?
No, I'll be out of town.
Mr. Sheriff? Ms. Nichols? Then, right now, I'll nominate Mr. Hayes. All in favor of appointing Mr. Hayes as our delegate, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Mr. Hayes, you are our delegate.
I will somehow carry this burden as best I can.
Okay. You've got a copy of the form, if you will send that in to Ramona. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, Restart Reform Model Application for Rachel Freeman School of Engineering and Snipes Academy of Arts Design, Appendix O, Dr. Smith.
Yes, good evening. I'm asking for approval for the submission to the North Carolina State Board of Education, an application for Snipes Academy of Arts and Design and Rachel Freeman School of Engineering to be designated as Restart Reform Model Schools. The restart model would authorize the New Henry County Schools Board of Education to operate both schools with the same exemptions from the statutes and rules as charter schools. This would provide the school with additional calendar, class size, tests, testing, and hiring flexibility.
All those, do I have a motion to accept?
I can.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions? Yes, Mr. Shell.
How, can you lay out how that would be different?
Yes. So for us as a district, and very specific to these schools, previous models for improvement have focused on increasing parent volun- involvement, increasing professional development for teachers, and more effective management of student behavior. But unfortunately, high levels of teacher turnover has occurred during the year. So what happens as a result of that front-loading is that these teachers who are trained leave and they take that training with them. So this model for an improvement strategy has proven ineffective for us. So what we're doing is shifting to a strategy that would lead to greater longevity in staff and increased opportunities for students to have that access to high-quality learning that we know is, is necessary. So with the reform model, we would look to move to a significantly different day for these schools, one that would elongate four days out of the week, shorten the, at least one day of the week, giving teachers that opportunity to have professional development during the day every week. A part of the conversations that we've had with, with the principals in, in discussion for this application, we would work with families to provide them with childcare because we don't want this shift to be a burden for them. Additionally, we would ensure that the teachers have access to high-quality curriculums that they would use to provide high-quality instruction to students, specifically in the areas of math and ELA. Right now, we're piloting one of those curriculums at the school in, in English Language Arts, and we would work to adopt an additional math curriculum.
Where are you piloting that now?
We're piloting it currently at Freeman, at Snipes. This is the first year. Williams and Forest Hills are the schools where we're piloting that, that specific curriculum. Additionally, what we would be seeking from the state would be flexibility in hiring. We, charter schools do not have to adhere to the same licensure requirements as public schools, and we would look to be able to hire individuals who had expertise that would align with the, the focus of the, of the magnet school. So for Snipes, it would be someone in the arts, and for Freeman, it would be someone in the engineering field, should there be a vacancy or need. And then also in requ- in requesting exemption from class size requirements, this would reduce the likelihood of having combo classes where you might find second and third graders in the same classroom. We know that this adds, unfortunately, some undue stresses and burdens on teachers in that they've got two curriculums that they're responsible for, often teachers feel, you know, isolation if they're the only teacher teaching those two curriculums within that one building. So this flexibility would allow for us to, to be able to avoid those types of situations. And then also, when you implement combo classes, a lot of times, there are additional expectations placed on students. So while the teacher's teaching third-grade students, there's an expectation that the second-grade students, students be able to work in, in isolation and work independently at a, at a much greater rate than you might find in a typical second-grade classroom. So asking for these flexibilities would allow us to not have to institute those practices, which is what we have to do with our typical schools. The other requirement is we're asking for relief from the read-to-achieve requirements for the state, from the state. We agree with the instructional practices associated with read-to-achieve, but we think that the additional testing requirements do place an undue burden on our teachers and, and our students. And specifically at schools where we have children who have some academic deficits going into the curriculum. And we would ask from the state if the application is approved, flexibility to use the monies that are associated with read-to-achieve to supplement our intercession program, so it becomes that just-in-time opportunities for extending the learning as opposed to waiting until, you know, a child is unsuccessful and then you intervene during the summertime.
I move for approval as presented.
Have a motion or hear a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Questions?
Yes. Thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
What, uh, I, I don't mean this in a challenging way. I'm trying to understand, what makes you think that that will reduce turnover with teachers? I mean, I understand the professional development, I hear that a lot, that, that we're not doing what we need to do. It's, but can you elaborate a little more on that?
Yes. So, so often what we do at our schools that have large numbers of needs is we front-load the year with professional development. We will often bring these teachers in, and we will professional develop them to, to death. And the expectation has traditionally been, so we've given you this four or five days of additional training, go forth and do great work. But, you know, we can reflect on our own learning, what happens when you get all of your information up front and there's no touch point along the way to sustain that. So again, shifting to a model that teacher gets that just-in-time learning, just like we provide to our children, and then the expectation is you deliver that instruction in a high-quality format to the children. Also during the week in, in our plan, we, we've spoken with the principals about making sure that they provide feedback to the teachers. So it becomes this cyclical kind of thing, so they're getting small chunks of professional development. So we believe that this will add to the longevity because teachers are going to be less overwhelmed and they're going to be better prepared. So they're going to get the kind of coaching and the kind of feedback in the professional development to address the most immediate needs of their children, as opposed to trying to give them everything that they need at the beginning of the year. Or there might be one workday in February, and so in February, we're going to teach you everything you need in February to get you through the rest of the year. Our current calendar makes it really challenging, and then even with intercessions, we do bring teachers back and provide them with some professional development during intercession, but for a lot of our teachers, they really need that time away. They really need that, that time to, to renew themselves. So moving to a model that allows for that professional development to occur during their work hours and giving them the time to collaborate during their work hours, we believe it's going to be less of a stressor on teachers, less of a stressor on, on families. One other thing is we find that when we have turnover during the year, we also lose the quality of the relationship with the, with, with the teacher and the student and then the teacher and the family. So again, at the beginning of the year, you've got a few workdays, you have your open house, you establish those relationships with your families, with your children, and then, you know, a teacher leaves, you know, mid-October or mid-September. Unfortunately, we've got an elementary school that we're talking about right now that's sitting with two vacancies in fourth grade for very similar types of things. And so, you know, we're doing our very best to hire highly qualified folks. It's very difficult this time of year, but we also know it's going to be somewhat challenging for that teacher to come in, and those children have already been in school for nine weeks, and establish that high-quality relationship with those children and with those teachers, excuse me, with those families. So again, we believe front-loading this, chunking it for teachers, is going to reduce their stress, build their, their teacher efficacy, and lead to much greater longevity at our schools.
So you'll still have the same end-of-year testing, so you have a comparison?
So we will still have the end-of-grade testing because charter schools have to do the end-of-grade testing. Our testing flexibility that we're requ- requesting is associated with the read-to-achieve legislation. So having children go through this process of taking the read-to-achieve tests or taking the interim assessments along the way, we're looking for flexibility away from that. It's kind of like this, you know, if you know a child's not going to be successful, you don't need to give them a test to tell you that. We'd much rather invest that time and energy and effort in instructing the child and then assessing the growth at the end of the year.
Sounds like this is a revelational thing. Why can't we do that across the board?
Well...
You don't have to answer.
Okay, great. Thanks. Appreciate that.
Now, has the state signed off on this proposal?
No. This, what I'm seeking tonight is the board's approval to make application to the State Board of Education. It is our understanding in terms of their timeline that they are requesting that all applications come to them by October the 12th, and then they're going to prepare them to go, excuse me, to, this goes to DPI by October the 12th, and then they're going to prepare those applications to go before the State Board on, in December.
But you have a pretty high confidence that it'll pass at the state level?
Unfortunately, I don't. There are quite a few things happening with our State Board, and so there are a lot of unknowns. I do believe that this is a strong application. I do believe that it represents what is in the best interest of our children, and I would hope that the board would see that as well. We will make an attempt to seek some feedback from the Department of Public Instruction in terms of their thoughts or ideas where we might strengthen our application. But unfortunately, my content, my attempts to contact them because of they've had a lot of transition have not been very, very, very successful. I leave a lot of messages and send emails, but unfortunately, the return has not been great. I've actually talked to at least one person on their last day of employment who I, at the very least appreciated that they returned the call their last day of, of employment, but they've had a lot of turnover.
So if this passes, uh, state, and you're in a position to hire staff that are not credentialed as they are today, would there be a pay differential between those folks that are, are credentialed and those folks that are not as credentialed?
So specifically what we're asking for are flexibility to hire folks associated with their magnet, and I'll defer to Dr. Wellmers, but I will make the assumption that there would not be any differential in the, in their salary.
Probably not, there wouldn't be, because what you're looking for, what, you, you've got a licensed person, but you're looking for someone with another very specific set of skill, skills who will bring that to the classroom. So you're, you're still going to be paying at the same rate.
Can I ask a question now?
Yes, go ahead.
Did you run this by the schools, and if so, what was the feedback from the staff?
So I did not speak directly with the staffs, but I spoke directly with the principals, and I had a follow-up conversation specifically with Ms. Manning, who couldn't be here this evening, and Ms. Sellers is, so I can let her respond. But Ms. Manning said that there was a lot of support from the staff. They are excited about the opportunity to have the flexibility and also to be able to, to have that just-in-time professional development. You know, sometimes we very unintentionally overwhelm our teachers, you know, with good stuff, but, you know, just for myself as an adult learner, to get everything up front and it's supposed to carry me through the end of the year, that's very, very challenging. So we'd love to be able to transition to a model that would be more conducive to how adult learning... to how adult learners learn and, um, one that would provide teachers with that just-in-time training as they need the skills and expertise to move forward with their instruction.
Will they be able to also tailor the instruction to, to what they're seeing during the day? Like, for example, I know Freeman has a lot of, uh, has a high number of EC students, um, comparatively speaking. So will they be able to tailor some of their professional development to, to that population specifically going forward, or, or, so will they be able to kind of, you know, kind of not pick and choose, but, you know what I'm saying?
So what I...
Based on the population that they have.
What I would say is, our goal is to meet the needs of all children in the school, and I don't know how we would be able to do that and not take into consideration those students with special needs.
But in terms of working all of that together within the classroom that they're in, you know what I'm saying, like, you, you, we're working on inclusion.
Mm-hmm.
But, you know, but you know what I mean, like, working with the classroom that you have, that's part of your classroom population. So, again, my question would be, looking at the population that you have, would you be able to more tailor the, the professional development that you're getting to, to your school population?
I think the answer to that is, is yes. And you think about it this way, in a school where you have that early release time,
Mm-hmm.
so that teachers come together, you can look at the data from the end of the week. And here's what my students are doing, here's the deficiencies. Here are things that we can try next week, heading in to address those. So you're getting some PD based on, 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 on data that's coming in that week that you can try next week, and, and end up having weekly kind of data conversations that you just simply can't find time for in the schedule. You're also maybe doing some of that piece that Dr. Smith talked about, where you do a, uh, you may be talking about PBIS at the beginning, and every week you're following up with what you're doing related to that professional development.
So how long of the, the elongated schoo- so what are you talking about in terms of, like, hours of the day?
So just as a preliminary, um, as a part of our conversation, um, we talked about an eight o'clock till four, eight to four, um, on Monday and Tuesday, and then eight to 12 on Wednesday, which would be that shortened day. And then Thursday and Friday would be eight to four. So essentially, they would receive the same number of instructional hours and, if not more. Um, and then we would work to provide some form of childcare on that half-day. We do not want this to be a burden to, to our families.
Has this been tried in other locations? I'm just wondering how that longer school day will work with elementary school, uh, school students? And if it has, like, you know, what, what the response has been?
Well, and, what I'll say is, you know, many of our children are in daycare till six o'clock. Um, and, uh, a lot of times when they arrive at daycare, one of the first things that they do is, you know, their, their homework. So we would structure it in such a way, so, you know, one example, most of our elementary schools right now provide a 90-minute ELA block. Um, but if you look at a child who's on grade level, they get 90 minutes of ELA. If you look at a child who is not on grade level, they get 90 minutes of ELA. But we have the expectation that at some point, this child who's not on grade level will at some point be on grade level. It's really difficult to, to achieve. So you've got to give them the opportunity to have more access to the high-quality curriculum, and so we would look at extending their blocks. Um, we would do it in a very developmentally appropriate way. Um, so it would incorporate breaks, it would incorporate movement, those types of things. Um, this is not a punishment for children, we're not punishing them in any way. We're designing a program that's going to be of high quality to meet, to meet their needs. There are, um, private schools that I know of, and, and actually some that are local that do have flex scheduling, um, and they'll have longer days. Um, and then they'll, they'll, you know, at least four days out of the week, and then they'll show a shortened day. A lot of times in that shortened day, it ends up being like a study hall period or a period for students who need extra help to get extra help. Um, so the model is not uncommon. I think it is probably less common or uncommon for public schools because traditionally, we, you know, we typically operate in a very traditional manner with very traditional schedules. But we see the need to, um, have dramatic improvement at these schools in something that is, that needs, um, an immediate acceleration. So it requires us to step outside of the boxes that we have typically been in. Um, I think the professional development that our teachers have received is, is excellent, it's high-quality. Um, they come in, we have great starts to the year, but at some point, it kind of breaks down and, you know, just with the number of teachers that leave during the middle of the year, that exodus of, of training and quality, it's, it's hard to replace and it's hard to replenish. So having a strategy that, um, supports longevity, I think is essential.
I'd like to call a question.
I have a question though, before you do that.
Okay.
I have, actually, I've got a comment and a question. Number one, I'm happy to know that the state legislature has finally, after talking 20-some years about charter schools and how they were supposed to be innovative opportunities, has finally adopted something that has been in the charter schools, and I've long advocated, and that is in special areas like math and science and foreign language, and as you said, art, that we can hire people without requiring them to go get those 18 hours of certification. The other question I have is, and maybe in scrolling through here, I missed it. If we get approved to do this, obviously, it needs to last more than a year or two years or three years. What's the timeline of how long approval will remain?
It is my understanding that we would be able to operate in this model for at least five years.
At least five years?
Yes.
Okay. And you talk about teachers leaving. Now, I'm assuming they're leaving and going to other school districts. They're not leaving and moving around in our district?
No, they're not, transfer, we do not allow transfers during the, the school year, yes.
And I understood they were supposed to, I understood teachers were supposed to be at a school for three years before they could apply to move, so...
And I've, and I've heard positive response from our, our folks in terms of that.
Good, all right, that's all right. All right, you want to call a question?
Yes, please.
A question's been called. All those in favor of submitting an application to DPI for us to use this, uh, this, uh...
Restart.
Restart reform model, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? It is approved, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, legal settlement. Mr. Bullard.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. As you recall, in closed session last month, the board approved a, a settlement of a legal claim that the board had against the former tenant of the J.C. Rowe Pre-K Center regarding a, a alleged breach of the lease. Um, this open meetings law requires that when the board enters into a settlement, that it read the terms of the settlement into the record in an open meeting. Uh, on Appendix P, uh, the statement, um, is presented there, and I would request that you, as chairman, read it into the record so that it can be reflected in the board's minutes.
I move for approval.
Second.
Well, let me, as soon as, if they'll bring it up, so, I mean, is that...
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, that's it, the statement is shown on Appendix P, yes, sir.
Okay, it's starting with pursuant?
Yes, sir.
Oh, okay. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, Day 318 on 11A3, the New Hanover County Board of Education announces that it has settled its claim against Access Family Services Incorporated for an alleged breach of a lease of, for the building located at 2875 Worth Drive, Wilmington, North Carolina, formerly known as the J.C. Rowe Pre-K Center. The terms are that Access Family Services Incorporated will pay the board the sum of $35,000, forfeit its security deposit in the amount of $7,274, and the parties will release each other from any claims regarding the lease as reflected in a written settlement agreement. The $35,000 will be paid in seven monthly installments of $5,000 beginning in September 2017. Do I hear a motion, we accept?
No, you have one.
Okay, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions or discussion?
I assume we received September's payment?
We've already received it, yes, sir.
Good.
I haven't given it to Mary Hazel yet, but I have the check.
Any other questions?
Been an internal control problem, uh, I'm just kidding.
Any other questions?
I wanted your approval first.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is approved. Next item on the agenda is correspondence. Anybody have any correspondence they want to share? All right, hearing none. Announcements, New Hanover County Board of Education Calendar Committee will meet on Thursday, I guess I can read it from here, October 5th, 2017, at 4:00 in Room 301 at Administration Building at 6410 Carolina Beach Road. B, the New Hanover County Board of Education Policy Committee will meet on Thursday, October 12th, 2017, at 1:45 PM in Room 301 Administration Building at 6410 Carolina Beach Road. C, the New Hanover County Board of Education Class Size Compliance Committee will meet on Thursday, October 12th, at 3:00 in Room 301 Administration Building, 6410 Carolina Beach Road. D, the JT, J, John T. Hoggard High School New Gymnasium Dedication will be held on Wednesday, October 18th, 2017, at 10:30 AM. Not 10:00? It's not 10:00, it's 10:30? All right, then I'll read it, it's 10:30. Just wanted to make sure I get it right in my calendar. And E, the next regular board meeting of New Hanover County Board of Education will be on Tuesday, November the 7th, 2017, at 5:30 PM in the Board of Education Center, 1805 South 13th Street. All right, we need to have a closed session, do I hear a motion that we go into closed session?
I move.
Have a motion, do I need, I have a second, do I have a second?
Mr. Higgins, you, uh...
Yes, all right, pursuant, I'm sorry, pursuant to 140, uh, excuse me. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A3. This will be a very quick one, and there'll be no action coming out. All right, right here.
I believe we go into closed session.
And do I hear a second? Need a second again.
Second.
Have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are in closed session, we will meet back in the back room.